7:01, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Kathleen can join us when she arrives to the meeting. For attendance tonight, like I said, Kathleen's not here yet. And Michelle, Kathleen signed up? There you are. Hi Kathleen. And Michelle Sturinski will not be here. So with that, could you please join me and rise? The flag please.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, in the highest of all.
Thanks, everybody. So before we get to end our meeting, on the agenda is... We are going to do the recognition of staff? Or do we want to have the student council?
I think we can have the student council.
Okay. Student Council, Katie and Lily. Who wants to go first?
All right, I'll take it away. So this year, we still wanted to do the Columbian Awards. So the annual award show that we do at Columbia that honors the seniors and then other recipients of the awards. So we still wanted to get those awards to the seniors prior to the end of the school year. So we decided to go about doing it by doing a virtual award show. And so the student council members went in and we filmed it about a week or two ago, following all of the social distancing guidelines, of course. And so then the recipients will get an invitation in the mail and they'll be able to watch that tomorrow. It will be streamed at 7:00 PM. So if anyone would like to join in and watch the Colombians, you're welcome to do so at 7:00.
Great, thanks Lily. Katie?
So we had elections last week, which went super well. And we're going to have something sent out in September to introduce all the officers before the new school year. And then we had a virtual meeting today to plan homecoming. So we decided on an Alice in Wonderland theme. And then we chose all the class colors. And then, since this is her last meeting, I'd just like to give a huge thank you to Lily for everything she's done this whole year to help us out. And as student council as a whole, we're going to miss you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Lily, thanks Katie. And again, thank you again for all coming to meetings and giving us updates. We appreciate it. And again, encouraging you to continue your activities and giving us support about what's happening with the high school. So take care and thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, have a good night.
You too. So we'll now move to the recognition of tenured staff, retirees, our mentors and mentees. Mr. Leonard?
Traditionally, we, on a manual basis, honor our teachers and our teaching assistants who are being awarded tenure, as well as recognize our instructional and non-instructional staff who are retiring from the district. And our mentors and mentees who have a supportive relationship to help all of our staff members grow, learn, and continue their professional development. Unfortunately, this year, we can't have a live opportunity to thank them and to honor them. We do have a mailing that will go out tomorrow. But we do want to take a few moments this evening to read each of the names of the honorees and to extend our appreciation for the excellent job that they are doing for the district or have done for the district in the case of the retirees, and to say congratulations and extend well wishes. For our tenure staff, I would comment, as I have in the past, that several years ago, the state changed the requirements for teachers and teaching assistants to earn tenure in school districts in the state of New York. And it is a rigorous process based on the progress that they make from the time that they're hired to the time that their term of probationary period has been served. And I know that our supervisors and our administrators have done their due diligence to ensure that each of the candidates who are recognized this evening have met the standards of the district, the standards of New York State. And tenure is not something that is automatic. It is something that is earned. And I congratulate each and every one of our teachers and teaching assistants earning tenure this evening. And I encourage them to continue their growth as they continue to serve the kids of our district, who always learn, who always strive to get better at what they do, and to sharpen their craft. So for our teachers, I'd like to recognize Jeffrey Amos, Lois Bird Rondo, Patricia Doherty Kazak, Jaclyn Duncan, Sarah Garno, Cara Horton, Pamela Jackson, Brad Jettie, Ryan Jones, Christopher Legere, Karina Mahar, Alex Omaczynski, Kellen Snyder, Samantha Stewart, Jonathan Wicks, Laura... What luck? I didn't say this correctly. Lardis? Say it for me, Peter. Lardicek? Excuse me. I apologize for that. And Heather Zaccolo. So those are our teachers who have been... Have served the district for four years. They have been recognized as meeting of the district standard. And we congratulate each of them on earning tenure. And the teaching assistant category, represented by the school-related personnel, I want to congratulate April Inkowski for also being awarded tenure this evening. And I want to thank her for her service to the district. Now we move to our retirees. We are thankful, as well as grateful, for 18 years of service from the man to my far left, Mr. Edson, who has served the district with distinction as our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance. And I know I joined the entire district administrative team in thanking him for being supportive over the years and doing such a great job and making sure that our district is financially stable district. He's done remarkable work in the district. And so tonight, we officially honor Mr. Edson. And one, what I hope will be a couple more honors down the road, Mr. Edson, for your service to the district. And congratulations and enjoy your retirement. We're going to work him right to the last minute as he's finding out in the school election. In the CSEA group, we have five employees who are retiring and we are grateful for their service to the district. Our non-instructional staff are so critically important to supporting our success in the district. I want to recognize and thank Vincent Janowski for his service to the district, Byron Lewis, Ed Nessler, Bonnie Roy, and Victoria Evanson for all of their service to the district. They have been remarkably supportive of our continued mission and we thank them and we wish them well in their retirement. She escaped my office several months ago. However, if she's out there, we want to recognize Monica Walsh, who was my secretary for almost three and a half years. Monica did an outstanding job and was very professional, supportive, and really helped to keep the superintendent's office welcoming and professional environment. So Monica, if you're out there, congratulations, again, on your retirement. Hopefully, listening. Hopefully, he's on the meeting. Our Assistant Director for People Personnel Services. I see him in the bottom right corner. There's Bill. We want to thank Bill Coyle, who has served in the capacity of Assistant Director of PPS for a number of years in the district. Done a remarkable job supporting our special education families, working through problems, and always striving to make sure that our kids' needs are met. He manages a lot of CSE meetings. But managing those CSE meetings, I have found Bill to be very child-centered, always willing to try and come up with a way to accommodate our kids and families. And that's what we want, Bill. And you will be sadly missed as you retire. You've done a remarkable job in supporting our special education students and families on behalf of the administrative team. I appreciate what you did for the district. Bill Coyle.
Thank you, Bill.
Also, someone who retired a couple of months ago in the Agatha Unit is our former Supervisor of Transportation. If she's out there, I hope she knows that she's still appreciated. And she is missed. But we want to congratulate Mary Ann Belmont for all of her years of running the Transportation Department and doing such a good job of keeping our kids safe and responding to our families' needs. Mary Ann Belmont, congratulations. We have a list of teachers who are retiring who have not only worked for the district as employees for a long period of time, but if you counted the number of kids that these individual teachers have impacted over their years of service, they have built a lot of futures. And they have contributed to not only the district's success, but the life success of the kids who have the good fortune of being present in their classrooms. So I'll read the names of our teachers who are retiring. And I would ask everybody at the end to give our teacher group a big round of applause. Daryl Stevenson, Stephen Ford, Sherry Collison, Scott Seiber, Marion Ruhan, Diana Prou, Colleen Kelly, Joanne Allen, and Colleen Masters. Congratulations to our teachers and thank you for your year. We have a number of people also chosen to retire either earlier this year or at the end of this school year, or represented by school-related personnel. As I said earlier, our schools are supported by wonderful non-instructional employees who, really, if you think about it, that's kind of a misnomer because they really have heart for kids. And some of the folks that we are honoring on this list, they are teachers in heart and they are teachers in the way that they have served our kids. Claudia Shields, Albert Chau, Linda Mayville, Deborah Weickel, Anne Warrington, Josephine Stewart, Mary Frances Bragg, Kathleen Wedworth, and Ogden McDonough, and Roberta Smith. So congratulations to our members of SRP who are retiring. In New York State, teachers are required, within their first two years, to receive a mentor. We have a number of teachers who have been part of that process and have completed that process. They are continuing their growth as probationary teachers, in many cases, and in some cases, tenure teachers. Sarah Pierce, Tyler Rose, Jaclyn Bream, Alyssa Fodera, Ashley Pratt, Leanne Dombrowski, Caroline Hampton, Rebecca Wilson, Sarah Morowski, Alicia Loveland, Lawrence Perez, and Melanie Schmidt. So congratulations to our mentees for participating in our mentorship program. Our mentors are experienced teachers who are willing to extend their expertise, their support, and their coaching to our teachers who are either new to the district or new to the profession. We want to thank our mentors and Mr. McHugh, who coordinates that program, for the support that they have provided our teachers through the mentoring program. We recognize mentors Joanne Allen, Chris Dedrick, Sarah Lucier, Sherry Valenti, Leslie Rep, Catherine Morrow, Tracy Cornell, Kelly Sharah, Scott Seiber, Jennifer O'Apalo, Megan Scolero, and Jessica Haladic. So congratulations and thank you to our mentors. And in light of our earlier presentation, we also will be sending a thank you to our student council representatives. And we wish Lily Mahoney much success as she graduates from Columbia High School. We know that she is going on to do great things as a leader and as a student and as a person who has made a huge difference at Columbia High School. So congratulations to Lily Mahoney and thank her for being our student council representative. And we also know that Katie Asenbauer is headed for a wonderful future as she continues to contribute in ways that make our community and our district better. So congratulations to Lily and Katie as being our student council representative.
Great, there'll be an opportunity for... They want to say a few words regarding our retirees, our tenure staff, our mentors, mentees, and student council reps. But I just want to say too that unfortunately, we have to celebrate in this manner. We look forward to this event every year. Many years of service and dedication to the community, the staff who have gotten tenure, coming on board, and just the giving back to the profession and the craft from our mentors to our mentees, which is the experience for our students and our colleagues in the district. And we really appreciate everything everyone's done for the school community. So again, we'll have some ability to do some comments later in the work form, but we'll now move to the public forum. And just a reminder that in the public forum, we will be using email function that's on the website to get any comments. I will read the public forum statement. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District, they address the Board on matters involving... Matters concerning programs and their operation of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the Board do not directly respond to this concern to the public forum. If a response is appropriate, the present or superintendent will contact the individual or future. Those persons wishing to address the Board will be recognized with the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name, address, or affiliation with the district or business. While the Board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The Board President will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of Board business. In addition, any remarks could be considered defamatory or stupidizing or prohibitive. It would declare it out. And we'll move to the emails. But I also will open up any comments to those present at the meeting here. The administrations. Nothing yet? So anyone who wants to address the Board? No? And no emails? Okay. We'll move to the Board forum then. I'd like to give the Board members an opportunity to say a few words regarding the recognition and anything else on their mind at this point. Board members? Mr. Man? You're good? You're kind of all scattered on my screen, so I can't kind of go in order here. So I would just throw it out to you. Anyone?
Mike, it's Joanne. I would like to congratulate our newly-tenured teachers. This wasn't a great year for them to finish out in tenure, and they did it, and they did it strong. And we congratulate them. To our newly-retired teachers, this was one different type of year to retire, and I'm sure it was a bittersweet way to leave and mark not knowing how it was going to turn out. We thank you for many years of service. And like Mr. Simon said, touching the lives of so many children. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Joanne. Karen?
Hey there, yeah, thanks, Mike. I just wanted to also congratulate everybody. Everybody's really worked wonders throughout this year and the hardships that they've had to come through and really have overcome so much teaching in their classrooms and everybody trying to keep our schools safe and healthy. Just so many wonderful teachers retiring also that have touched me and my kids' lives. Diane, Diana Prou, Colleen Masters, Scott Seiber, Steve Forbes. Phil Coyle's done so much for, you know, the district in his tenure. Mary Ann Belmont, you know, a hard shoes to fill with her going. Monica Walsh, I'm sure she's enjoying herself out there in her retirement already. And Larry, what can we say about Larry? I mean, he's really been a rock for the school district and has done... Led the district in such a sound way financially. We are always able to avoid certain obstacles that come across to us because of his fiscally responsible manner. So I'm really happy that he's able to retire coming up in the next month. And everybody, just really, everybody's come together and done a great job this year. So thank you to everybody.
Thanks, Karen. Kathleen? Jennifer? Good? Deanna or John? Good? Deanna?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. And Jenny? Want to say anything, Jen?
I was just going to say, I think both Karen and Joanne did a great job. And I just want to say thank you to everybody. Congratulations. And be safe and well in these next several months. And we look forward to our paths all crossing again real soon.
Thanks, Jennifer. I did get a chance to watch Mr. Leonard's Sports Awards live. That was very, very well done. I think I saw Mr. McHugh in there and I saw a few others. So great job in terms of awards, starting with our athletes. I know there's a lot of other awards that are coming and presentations that we'll see in the next couple of weeks. Looking forward to that. And I know that there's some things on the agenda we're talking about too regarding graduations. So congratulations. It's a challenging time right now for everyone. A lot of things are happening in the world and we're here for our kids. We're here for our community, we're here for our families. And that's the important thing, that we're here to support each other, and care for each other. With that, I will go to Mr. Simons, if you have any words, and then move on to the report.
I'm just trying to reiterate the... That despite the pandemic and the school closing and all the challenges we're having with that issue, we are proceeding with some normal business and making great gains. And one of the ideas I had last week was to bring Paul Bickel, Steve Wickman, our architect, and also Lynn Ellsworth, who's been our Long Term Construction Manager, give the Board an update on the progress we've made on Phase 1 and what we're anticipating regarding Phase 2 of our capital project. So I will ask Lynn and Paul and Steve, whoever wants to go first, kind of summarize the written report that we've given and to be ready to answer any questions the Board might have regarding our progress on the capital project.
Sure. I'll read through it. And as you said, at the end, if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask either myself, Lynn, or Steve. There was a document provided. Try to make it as simple as possible to follow. So Phase 1 is slowly winding down. It's actually completed at all but three buildings right now. It's currently... They're working on the fire alarm system at Belltop right now and at the Transportation Center. They're looking to complete that shortly. And then all forces will end up going out to Donald P. Sutherland where they'll finish that. And that will actually wrap up, finally, the first phase of the project. Because of everything going on, there was some situations where we had some downtime. We weren't sure if we could work. But then it became allowed as an executive order through the government that this kind of work could continue. So we were happy to be able to keep moving. The first part of Phase 2 began, actually, this spring. And I think you may remember a little while back, we tried to get this underway in hopes that we could have the chiller up and running in case we had a normal school year so that children would be comfortable come this time of year when it was time to fire up. But obviously, we didn't have a normal school year. But regardless, the new chiller is in. It was tested last week. And as of right now, they actually did a final test today just to verify everything. The new chiller is completely operational at this point. So that's great news. Couple of things are going on. At early stages of abatement have already begun at both Goff and Green Meadow and soon to start at Red Mill. So I'm going to read down through a couple of things that we have going on here. And it's been kind of a difficult time just being able to organize this properly because with COVID-19, there's a lot of things, building material-wise, that have been difficult to come about as far as casework, meaning things like cabinets and stuff like that. So we kind of had to juggle some things between this summer and next summer as Phase 2 is a two-summer project. So at Green Meadow, the plan is to work on replacing the bathrooms in the center corridor next to the cafeteria. They're also going to work on the front-left wing of the school, replacing the bathrooms in there with ADA-compliant bathrooms. And that includes the associated abatement, supply, waste piping, and everything like that, including cabinetry, new cubbies, which we worked diligently with the principals at both Green Meadow and Red Mill to try to accommodate as many new cubbies as we could with taking the slight extra space that we had to take to make the bathrooms ADA-compliant. The far-left kindergarten wings at Green Meadow are getting bottle filler drinking fountains added. In less than a week, or probably about a week, they're going to start refinishing the gym floor at Green Meadow, which means taking it right down to the wood, restriping it and repolying it. So it should look like a new floor after they do that work. A big thing that is... Has been necessary for a while is the utility work at the school itself. They're going to actually be running new utility wires underground and a new outdoor transformer to power the building. One thing that's happening at all buildings is daylight savings control systems. That's mandated by SED whenever you're doing this sort of a project. And basically, for those that don't know what that is, it basically has sensors in the room where the outside windows, if they're allowing in a certain amount of light during a day, it actually shuts off the lights that are closest to those outside windows in an effort to save energy. So that's being done. And that's, like I say, a mandate that'll be at all schools. And also at Green Meadow, there's a hot water heater that's going to be replaced. One was previously replaced by the district. It had failed, so we had no choice but to replace it. So they're going to be replacing it with a map... They're going to be adding a matching one because each school has two for redundancy. Going on to Red Mill, they're going to be working in the lower and upper-level rear wings, doing bathroom fixtures and small toilets in the classrooms. There's a re-roofing project going on there that'll be starting over the summer. Currently, the gym floor is already underway. At that school, it's already been sanded down and they are working on painting the lines. And that should be finished soon. They're adding a couple little things to it to kind of make it Red Mill Zone, adding some red lines and things like that and a nice Red Mill graphic to it. So it should be really nice when it's done. There's a ramp going out to the back of the building, which is the only exit out of the back lower loop of the building. That particular ramp is scheduled to be replaced. However, because of some of the other work they're doing in that loop, they do have to use that ramp for quite some time to get asbestos and other things in it, out of the building and the other debris. So once that's taken care of, then they will be working to replace that ramp. And the idea behind that is to make a ramp that actually goes down towards the playground behind Red Mill. Right now, there's currently only steps. So it'll be a lot easier for children with special needs to get down to the playground that way. They are going to be doing some selected areas of masonry repair, which basically just includes... which basically just includes repointing of the building in spots where the masonry has decayed. Red Mill is also getting utility work and a completely new utility system coming into the building, the same daylight controls. Red Mill's also getting a new parking lot on the north side of the building. So, those of you that pull into Red Mill and hit the potholes there, that whole section going straight back is to be replaced. The front section was replaced in a previous capital project. So, we're actually just gonna have that seal coated and striped. But Red Mill's parking lot should be in a lot better shape after that. Red Mill also needs 2 hot water heaters. They have 2 older hot water heaters, so they'll be getting those. Hope I'm not boring everybody, I'm almost through this. Goff, as I said, the abatement's already underway there. They're gonna be mostly working in the greenhouse, which is the front right wing, doing abatement and replacing the bathrooms and fixtures in that area. They'll also be working in the administrative wing. For those of you that are familiar with Goff, they're going to be adding some extra bathrooms and also pushing back the bathrooms that were in the staff room there. So, it'll be kind of 4 bathrooms now rather than 2. There's gonna be some repair work done to the exterior walls of the gym. You can actually only really see that from the outside of the building, but I think you can see it through some of the windows in the building. They're falling apart, so you're gonna be doing some repair work there. Also some masonry pointing, also the daylight control work. Transportation building is getting a desperately needed rear parking lot. The whole parking lot's actually gonna be torn out in the back section and wrapping around the section near Goff. And it'll be raised up slightly. And we're hoping that we can get that contoured better to help alleviate the huddling. And for those of you that are familiar with that area, the back corner of the parking lot in the springtime actually floats. If you're walking on the pavement, you can actually feel the pavement squishing behind you. So, that's a desperately needed one. The ground shop in front of Columbia is also getting repaved. Next summer, just to go through this quickly, the rear wing of Green Meadow will be quite a big project. All the small bathrooms in that whole area are gonna be redone in all the rooms along with new HVAC units in the office suites and the daylighting controls. The Red Mill Elementary School will be getting the upper-level front wing fixtures and bathrooms replaced. Replacement of the HVAC system in the office suites and also the daylighting controls. Goff will be getting some, they'll be moving back to the Red House wing where they'll be doing the same things they're doing this year in the greenhouse. Also some assorted cabinetry replacements. That was supposed to be part of this summer's project, but unfortunately, with cabinetry being hard to come by, we had to push that out. They'll be doing reconstruction of the technology suites. I believe a little bit of that is happening this year. They may try to sneak some of that in. But again, the things such as the tables and furniture for those rooms may not be available. So, I think they may do some stuff and possibly have to put the old equipment back in temporarily. But we're trying to take advantage of this summer and a couple of extra weeks that we have to do what we can, wherever we can. Goff will be getting the Home and Career Suite spaces redone. And the complete front and side parking lots will be redone, reshaped, including the parent drop-off area. So, that's kind of a wrap-up for Phase 2. Phase 3 is actually currently in the planning stages, very close to going to SED for submission. We're planning a submission by August 10th, which will hopefully get us out to bid earlier and get some good bids on that with the possibility of some Phase 3 stuff beginning as early as next summer. So, that's what I have. If you have any questions, I'll open it up again to myself, Lynn, or Steve.
Is there any questions for Steve? Is Lynn out there too? Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm here.
Lynn, any comments Lynn?
No, he covered it really well.
Alright. More members, any comments or questions for Steve? Please, I see that the work is continued. He has some extra time to work on some of the things. You know, a lot of the infrastructure looks like it's really going well. Any concerns Steve as you proceed with the work?
No concerns at the moment. Of course, we have a lot of submittals in from contractors, so it's a very busy time for us trying to get our submittals approved so that materials can be ordered and put back into the buildings for the opening in September. So, very busy on our end. I don't see a lot of big issues. Casework is something Paul mentioned. Just so you know, a lot of manufacturing items like casework and some ceramic tile didn't produce anything during the 2 and 1/2-month COVID. Their plants were shut down. So, they're restarting again, except that there's a long line ahead of us of past projects. So, we're certainly cognizant of that and we're working through it. We're trying to turn the submittals around as quickly as we can. And as of right now, I don't have any major issues, no.
Any cost issues Steve? In terms of those materials?
Pardon?
Any cost issues in terms of materials, increased costs?
No, no. No, the only issues we've had is being able to get the materials. There hasn't been any cost issues so far.
Very good. Alright, well, thank you for the report, I appreciate it. Mr. Simons, anything else? No, thanks guys, good job, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving to several discussion items. A lot of these issues are probably, if you use the word "hot off the press", from the either SED, DOH, Governor's Office, the alphabet soup of state agencies that's involved with all these items. Not to make light of those, they are serious, but there's a lot of people involved with these issues. And there are some things that we need to update the public on as well as kind of some of our plans preliminary for some of these openings. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Simons to get the discussion going.
So, as Mr. Pino said, it was an interesting weekend, last weekend. We were receiving notifications starting on Friday evening around 6, going all the way till Sunday afternoon around 2, related to each of these items. And all of these items relating to changes and/or shifting decisions that were made at the state level, which are intended to address some of the school districts' concerns. First and a rather important one is regarding graduations. We received notification over the weekend that Governor had changed his position regarding permitting districts to hold in-person graduation ceremonies as long as they were outdoors. The prior direction that we had received from the State Department of Health, really about a week prior to the Governor's new determination, was that drive-through graduations, graduations that were done remotely, virtual graduations and graduations that were done at a drive-in, were all permissible forms of graduation. And there was some guidance that was provided by New York State Department of Health regarding those. The new guidance and the new executive order from the Governor permits a live graduation ceremony to occur outdoors as long as the gathering does not involve more than 150 participants, 150 or less. And 150 participants includes everybody. It includes our students who are honoring. It includes any family members who are there to celebrate the graduation of their students. And it includes any staff that are necessary to support the ceremony. So, with this change, the board is aware that we had a plan to use the Columbia High School football field. Kind of held in the queue to see whether or not restrictions would be loosened. So, we're gonna use that plan with some small modifications, but not significant modifications. The district had gone ahead and reserved the mall to drive-in for fear that we would lose that opportunity for our students and our families. We were informed a couple of weeks ago that we needed to get a deposit in if we were going to use it because there were a number of other districts that were interested. And so, we went forward and booked the drive-in. And we have characterized that event on June 16th as a senior family celebration. It'll be the only opportunity because of the size limitations on our groups where everyone in the senior class and their families can be together, although they'll be together in a different form. They will be in their own cars with their own families. And they will be enjoying a slideshow, video presentation that has been put together by students, the high school administration, which will include some of your typical speeches that would otherwise be done at a graduation ceremony. And it will include some videos capturing our seniors as well as some special items that we won't talk about right now because we don't want to steal Mr. Harkin's thunder. So, we're hoping that everybody will join us for that. If families cannot join us for that event on the 16th, we will be able to provide a video of it and people can look at it on our website. Additionally, we are for that particular event working with East Green Bush Police Department, who's offered to reach out to the state troopers to make sure that that event can occur safely. I've been told today that Sergeant Tubbs will be there from the East Green Bush Police Department. Chief Rosinsky is trying to make arrangements for herself to be there in person. And we're waiting to hear back from the state troopers to make sure that that event is a safe event. We have to hold the event at 9 o'clock because it's the only time it gets dark and you can't see the video until any earlier than that. We will have our safety supervisors there as well, as well as our assistant principals and principals to assist with our game directions as well as supervision. I will be there and others will be there to make sure that the supervision is in place. The graduation ceremonies themselves, we're calling those diploma ceremonies. Because of the group size limitations, we have to have 10 smaller ceremonies. Those ceremonies will begin at 9 o'clock on the date at which our graduation was already scheduled, which is June 27th. This is a Saturday with a rain date of June 28th. And I've been assured that it won't rain either the 27th or the 28th. Although that did not come from Governor Paul. There are a lot of logistics in operating that ceremony safely. Procedures will be very tight regarding social distancing. Everyone will wear a mask. Students will be permitted to take the mask off for photo opportunity. Each group of 30 students and their families will be advised that in order to ensure that we can get all the ceremonies in safely on Saturday, that we're going to have to be rather efficient about moving through each group. There'll be some staging of the parking in order to accommodate that and make sure that that happens smoothly. And the police department, East Green Bush, has also offered to be there to help the supervision. So, I'm probably missing some details about this. We're happy that we can offer 2 events for the community. We're glad that the Governor has permitted live graduations. We're gonna do our best within the parameters that the Governor has set to have this be a celebration, which is truly worthy of the great graduates and families that we have. And we're still working on it as it is evolving. And we hope to communicate either tomorrow or the next day, communication to the parents. So, I'm gonna call on Mr. Harkin to fill in some of the details regarding the arrangements that we've made to make sure that the ceremony is done with the appropriate honor for our kids. Mr. Hark?
Thank you, Mr. Simons. We've been able to secure a stage, a sound system, a company that will be able to do a live broadcast as well as record it so that we can splice that and the speeches together and provide what will look like a graduation for our families to have. We have a professional photographer that we have secured to come and take the picture of the student walking across the stage like we've traditionally done. And then one after they exit the stage with their parents. And we have all the safety protocols. And we finished some forms today that were sent to your office. I know that was sent into the counties for approval. But we're pretty confident with our plans with the hand sanitizing and then the emails and letters that will be going home to families to just remind them of the important facts of the maintained social distancing, remaining in their cars until their event starts, and then returning to their cars and exiting the campus. I'm confident that we'll have a safe ceremony for everybody on the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. Harkin. Are there any questions about graduation or commencement-related ceremonies? Comments?
Jeff, I just wanna say thank you to everybody who's worked so hard to come up with something for our students. Thank you, Mr. Harkin, thank you to everybody because I know that this is really important for a lot of families.
I agree, it is. I think parents will be very excited to hear this.
Thank you Kathleen. Yeah, I'm glad we kept the 2 options on the table. It was something that the survey indicated that if we could do something like that, we wanted to be able to do that. Nice celebration, the drive-in, a safe event there, everybody together. And then I like the idea of splicing things together. You have a memorable video, Mike, that sounds great to kind of put together a whole kind of capturing of all the events so people can see it. Kudos to the staff for coming together and putting those things in place for our families and our students. As Kathleen said, it's been challenging enough for everybody. I think this will be at least a way to celebrate together to conclude the year. Thank you.
We weren't certain because of the change if we were gonna be able to secure the live streaming. But we have 2 vendors. Mark Adam has worked with Mike Harkin to identify 2 vendors and we're evaluating their plans and their costs right now. But we have 2 vendors available who can do that for us. On the next topic, my agenda up again, school vote. This has been an interesting process. If you've seen the commercial Captain Obvious, it's starting to sound like Captain Obvious lately, right Larry? The Governor and the Legislature have enabled the districts in New York State to extend the voting deadline week. So, tonight, we would have been counting votes right now, right Mr. Edson? I think we would have been here. But we're still receiving them. And I will turn it over to Mr. Edson because Mr. Edson warned me before this meeting that he wanted to talk about the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. May 19th was the original vote date. And it was then changed by executive order to June 9th by paper ballot only. And in preparation for that, on May 27th, we mailed out 22,228 absentee ballots and return envelopes to those that are registered in our district. And then on Sunday, the Governor's order was to move the date for receipt of returned ballots to June 16th. And we will be accepting mail returns through the 16th. In-person drop-offs ended yesterday, Tuesday, June 9th. So, we're only accepting mail in the next week. And in honor of Jim McHugh, I prepared some statistics. We had 22,228 registered voters in our original poll books. We had 108 late registrants. Upon getting some calls from people that we mailed out ballots to, we have disqualified... Upon getting some calls from people that we mailed out ballots to, we have disqualified 214 of those because they were on roads, continuous roads in our district in certain spots where the remainder of the road was in another district. So that was helpful. It has never come to light before, but we disqualified a number of people and fortunately we had only a couple of people that decided to vote and of course, there's, votes have been polled. So we have net registered voters of 22,122. We received back 7,554 envelopes for a 34.1% return rate. Out of those, we have 493 problem envelopes, which 240 of them were returned to center, unable to forward. People moved. Another 240, I don't know why that count is exact, but maybe I'll play the daily number tomorrow. 240 were unsigned, the certification on the back of the envelope, can't count them. Four individuals was known to be deceased and nine, an objection was made and sustained with regard to the envelope. They crossed out their address, unable to read the signature or they crossed out their name and so we are unable to accept them. So therefore, 7,061 currently are available for counting next week, which is an approximate return rate of 31.9%. By election district, election district number one DPS, their return rate's 26.8%. Green Meadow, election district two, 32.3%. Election district three, Bell Top, 30.6%. And election district four, the Howard Eldorf School, 33.7%, which means our overall return rate of the 7,061 is an overall return rate of ballot envelopes of 31.9%. And the closest election that we could find in our 40-year history of tracking elections was back in May of 1994 where there were 5,045 voters. So this is an all-time record and they're still coming in in the next week. And our plan is to begin the count on Tuesday, the 16th at 5:00 PM. It will be live streamed. At the start of that time period, there'll be a 10 to 15-minute challenge period where people can call in and challenge someone who's on the roll. The rolls are open for inspection in the five days preceding the vote or view, public view. And after that 15-minute challenge period on the 16th, we will begin opening envelopes and counting. We have a good election team that the board pointed at the last board meeting and we will be taking breaks on the, right at 10 minutes before the hour, 5:50, 6:50, et cetera. And I will announce totals at the top of each hour, kind of like the telethon. And we will notify everyone once we're finished counting. We expect to count until about 10:00 PM on that date. If we only have a few more left, we might finish out, but if we're unable to finish, then we will reconvene at 9:00 AM the next morning and continue counting until we're done. We do have a plan that has been passed by the school attorney about how we're going to count those ballots and we think we're ready. We're ready tonight, but we'll also be ready next week and we're sorry that it conflicts with the drive-in ceremony. People should go and have fun at the drive-in ceremony and let you know how the vote turns out.
Maybe you can figure out a way to broadcast it again.
Give you a call, but if we're able to count and finish, I agree.
Any question or discussion for Larry regarding the vote process? Thank you for, and your team for all the work you're doing so far and great data. Jim, I hope you're impressed by the data that Larry provided. I don't know if anybody was around in 1994. I certainly was not a part of the board that time. Thanks again and we look forward to a positive outcome for.
I just want to thank all of his work and let him know that we're glad that his final vote isn't a boring one.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, move on to our next discussion item.
We also received notification over the weekend that the governor would permit in-person summer school. The previous guidance had indicated that the governor would only permit virtual summer school. This particular executive order indicated that we are able to do this for our special education populations. We have a good number of students who are eligible for special education summer school, referred to by the state as ESY, which is extended school year. We have been reviewing the guidance, which we received yesterday. The guidance did not come from the state education department, it came from the Department of Health. Molly McGrath, myself, Marissa Cannon, Jim McHugh, Mary Edson, Paul Bickel reviewed the guidance yesterday and started discussing about the health and safety aspects of being able to provide an in-person summer school. Molly started the process of engaging her staff in reviewing the needs of the students as well as the wishes of the families. And Molly, I'm going to turn it over to you to start by telling us how many kids we have eligible, what the status of contacting the families are, what we anticipate our numbers are at this point, and just kind of give us an update. This has been a very active discussion, both within our district and within the Bozies and northern districts across the state. How do we do this? How do we do it safely and what do we need to do to get ready for it? Required us to go from a virtual model to an in-person model and to weigh both of those options and we're leading towards going towards the live model. Molly?
Thank you, Jeff. So we had about 255 students who are eligible for extended school year programming. And on the first wave, when we found out late last week in May that we were going to remain online, we had surveyed all of the families. So our special education teachers were incredibly proactive and they made outreach to all 255 families in two days' notice. So we had about 30% of families saying no thank you to continue online. They were experiencing distant learning and teletherapy fatigue. I think I updated you guys last time on that. So with the new executive order, we changed directions and we wanted to survey families to see how many would opt in if we were in person, continuing in person. So right now, we've had 189 families respond and 110 have opted in. So we're about 60%. And we still have a lot of families who haven't made a decision yet and we're hoping to have everyone decide by the end of the week so we can move forward with planning around transportation and ensuring that we have proper PPE and all the safety measures and protocols in place once we have accurate enrollment.
Molly's done a remarkable job and she's getting a lot of feedback, very positive from the staff that's involved in helping her do this. So I just want to recognize Molly has done a lot of work in two days' time to get us in a good position that we're in right now. She's done a super job.
My other question, so with the guidance and protocols that are in place, how are we doing with staffing? Maybe Marissa can help too and then maybe backup staffing for those. How's the response been so far for in-person?
Sure. The guidance states that class sizes can be no larger than 10 students. So we need an accurate enrollment list first before we work to staff. So we'll make sure our class sizes are no greater than 10 students and then we hire teachers and teaching assistants and move forward with the plans.
Molly, any indication about the staff's willingness to work in the program versus some, that might be reluctant, I think that's what Mr. Noah was. Do you have any general indication of the staff's willingness to work in person to provide the program at this time?
I can provide an update on that, Mr. Simons. Molly and I have a master staffing list of the names that have submitted letters of interest, both our instructional staff and our non-instructional staff. At this time, only two individuals have asked to remove themselves from that list due to health concerns. We are understanding of that and we wish them well over the summer and they have been removed from the list. As of this time, I have not, have, have been given any other feedback that staff wished to rescind their name from that list. So I think we are in good shape moving forward and Ms. McGrath and I will continue staffing discussions later this week and beginning up next week. And our intent is to put forward to the board for approval, the staffing on June 24th.
That's excellent news. I'm really pleased to hear about that and I think it sounds like everyone's anxious to at least do something and come in and see our kids again and help out any way they can. Any special training required for that, this part of the guidance?
I'll speak to that. I wanted to speak a little bit to what some of the guidelines are a little bit. And while one of them is, we have to provide the staff that works in the program with specific training on the CDC guidelines and the Department of Health guidelines regarding procedures and the PPE and all the things that need to be done to work in the program. And so we talked about having that, once we know who the staff is, doing that in a way, in a similar way to what we would do in new teacher orientation, just orient all of the staff, probably do it remotely. Some of the, some of the guidelines include, it's broken down into what you need to do before opening, which is to train all the faculty and staff regarding the precautions of either remote or in-person, social distancing, wearing face coverings, et cetera. While operating, all staff is required to wear face coverings when they are within six feet of students or other staff. So in the case of staff members, they will all have to be wearing face coverings if they're within six feet proximity of another staff member or another student, but in cases when they're maybe alone or in a larger space where they're not, not within six feet, they can take it off. Additionally, students are not required to wear face coverings, but they are encouraged to wear them. So we'll be encouraging families to have their children wear face coverings. We haven't yet completely thought through the circumstances in which we would recommend children wear those and when they can take them off. We're still talking about that. As far as the staff is concerned, the employer, which is the district, is required to provide the face coverings. We have more than enough inventory of masks. Is that correct, Marissa?
That is correct and we have ordered an additional 200 for the summer school program.
Want to talk about the children's masks a little bit because we do want to have those available from the district in the event that a family doesn't have it or a student shows up and they, they don't have it with them and the family would like them to wear a mask.
Yes. I have been working with Sam Beardsley to identify a vendor that would be able to provide us with children-sized face masks. We did identify that vendor. I am actually meeting with Mr. Beardsley tomorrow to talk a little bit more of how small they actually are. We're confident that those face masks will fit our children who are in the grades three through eight range and then the adult face coverings would fit the children in grades nine through 12. But we are still working to identify how small the masks needs to be to fit our students in that K2, K3 range. So I can provide a future update, but we are working diligently on getting those face masks for the July 6th start of the program.
Additionally, we are required to make sure that we're following all hygiene and cleaning and disinfecting practices as outlined by the CDC. Paul Bickel is working on assessing the inventory of the cleaning materials and chemicals that we have and we think we're in fairly good shape. Paul, you want to comment on that? Are you still up there?
Yep, I'm here. Yeah, so we've been stocking up. Things are becoming more and more available. I was actually to get, was able to order some supplies, some wipes and things like that today. So that's encouraging. Our standard cleaning materials, which we always have to fall back on, they are approved to kill COVID-19. So we have those, so that's not an issue. We were just looking for a way to get something to the teachers so that they could also help in between with disinfection whenever, whenever possible or necessary. I also got some social distancing floor stickers on order as well as some different signs and stuff that can be hung at the front doors, that can be hung in the bathrooms and also some floor tape that can go down. So a bunch of different things that we'll be able to apply and hopefully with everything, you know, be able to keep everything under control.
Thank you, Paul. Once we finalize the student enrollment, then we will work with Mr. Noah. Mr. Noah is probably asking himself, how am I going to do this? We don't know is the answer, the honest answer. We're going to wait to see what students sign up, work with Mr. Noah on the best solution. There are no specific guidelines within this document related to transportation. We envision, the document also allows us to go above and beyond what the state requires. So one of the preliminary discussions we had yesterday is that we would perhaps require the kids on the bus to wear the masks. We're still discussing whether or not a driver would wear a mask. We want to look at that from a health and safety standpoint, driving the vehicle. That is not required by the document. We think at a minimum, if the kids are on a bus, depending on how many kids are on that bus, after we plan the routes, whether or not they could be six feet apart would be challenging. So we think it's best for them to wear the masks on the bus. We also think it might be best for the kids when they are coming off the bus and in lines that might become congestive, to wear the masks and then when they get into the classroom and are sitting at desks which are spaced apart, they could take the masks off. That's our thinking at this point, which is subject to change and working with Mr. Noah on how to do that in the safest way. One of the areas that is still under discussion is what is our obligation to do, screening of students and staff. We saw some direction from the county department of health today and we didn't get it. We're hoping to get some further direction. The directions actually say that we should be on the lookout for signs and symptoms of illness among the staff and the students, that we should implement health screening assessments such as questionnaires and temperature checks before employees begin work each day, asking about COVID-19 symptoms within the past 14 days. We've seen some of these surveys in the businesses right now as the businesses opened up. Any positive COVID-19 tests in the past 14 days, any close contact with someone suspected or having a confirmed case of COVID-19. But that provision does not require us, we don't believe, to screen the students every day. It says something that's somewhat ambiguous. Screening is strongly recommended but not required of students through their parent or guardian. So the way we read that is the parent and guardian is responsible for doing the screening of the children and to report any, keep their child home if any of the answers to the questionnaire or the temperature indicates they are sick. But we're seeing a little more guidance on that issue and that's somewhat of a sticking point right now. We did, as a precaution, reach out to vendors a couple of months ago, excuse me, a couple of months ago, several weeks ago, try to obtain more thermometers in the district, temperature thermometers that you could just point at the forehead. Those have not arrived yet and are in back order and I think Molly and Marissa has pursued an additional source today and give us an update on those.
Jeff, we ordered 10 extra from Amazon today, so they will be here before the program starts.
For whatever reason, Molly and Marissa are very good at finding the materials that nobody else can find, so just keep that in mind and don't share them with any other people. Just kidding. So we're working through these regulations. One other thing I would say is the guidance includes trying to minimize as much as possible mixing groups of kids. So if students are assigned to a group of 10, assigned to a group of 10, they should probably stay with the 10 kids that they are assigned to, it's not mixed classes together. The only exception might be where a speech teacher or a reading teacher, an OT or a PT pull kids from different classes in order to provide group service. Okay? And in that case... Okay. And in that case, um, a great issue came up yesterday that I would never have thought of from our, from our administrators. What about the speech therapist? Because if a speech therapist is wearing a face covering, the students need to read their lips and formulate sounds and words from the modeling of the teacher. So what we came up with, um, an opportunity for our valedictorian, Owen Bowe, who you may have read about in the Times Union, I called him up and he called me right back. And I asked him to order 15 face shields and to get them to us as soon as possible. He said, well, Mr. Simons, I can get you more than 40 if you'd like. Uh, and I said, no, I only need 15. And he promises to get them here by the weekend. So we will have the face shields that we need produced by our student valedictorian. So, um, I think we're in fairly good shape. Uh, other than confirming how many kids, families want to come, getting the staffing in place, arranging the transportation and kind of clarifying what these procedures are going to be for screening. The other thing we have to do, no different than what we're doing in central offices, we have to keep track of everybody who's in and out of that program every day, through an attendance of both the students and the staff in case there is an issue of, in case of COVID-19 and we have to do contact tracing. So it's a tall order in a short period of time, but one of the things I want to just remind everybody, I think we all know that, the students with disabilities, particularly the ones that are most significantly uh, in need of support are struggling with this remote learning. Okay. And the advocates for special education have, including the parents, said, uh, we need to figure out something for these kids. And so that's what we're trying to do. We're using Columbia High School.
Columbia High School?
Yes.
In, in the past, we have provided transportation for, uh, outside of the district to locations. Is that still going to occur?
I don't know. Mark, do you, do you know about, or Molly, do you know in the past that we provided transportation for kids that live outside the district who attend our program?
Yeah, yeah.
To our private.
I, I misunderstood the question. Mr. Van West, are we transporting kids within our district to go to programs outside the district?
Such as Wildwood and places like those? Yeah, we still transport to them. If they have a program, then, then yes.
So those programs haven't decided if they're able to open in person yet, so we really don't have an answer there. We're still waiting for them to decide.
If they don't open, will we as a district offer those students anything in our district?
I think it depends on the needs of the children and whether or not we can service those needs within our district. Some of the kids we might be able to service and some of them you might not. Is that correct, Molly?
Right. All students placed out of district. We have, um, 46 students placed out of districts. 23 are placed at Questar Bosse's and 23 in private placements, and they required highly specialized programs, and that's why they are out of district. So, um, that would be extremely challenging and possibly not appropriate.
So we're tracking those organizations. They're going to let you know if they're going to open.
Yes, um, Questar said they'll hopefully make a decision by the end of the week. Wildwood said the same. Um, we have three students placed in Massachusetts. Um, so we're, we're waiting to hear from Hillcrest. Uh, so a lot, a lot of work still needs to get done.
Thank you, Molly.
And your question regarding extended school year, summer school, I know you had to pivot pretty quick on this and, uh, we appreciate all your efforts, um, in thinking that through and all the logistics. Because as Jeff said, in the end, it's, it's about providing the appropriate services for our students, especially students with disabilities and, um, this experience as we, as we move through it will also probably give us some sense of how things may reopen in the future for all students. So how we kind of manage this. And I know we're up to the task, up to the challenge, and we have the resources to do that, and I'm, I'm really pleased to hear about that. Next discussion items. If there's any more questions, not, I'll move on. Um, discussion items, D and E are kind of tied together, so let's tie them together and.
I informed the board that Green Bush Childcare was interested in opening their summer program, which they typically operate in one of our schools. And throughout this school closing process, there have been conflicting uh, concerns regarding the operation of programs within schools. There still are. We were required to operate an essential childcare program, such a worker childcare program as a district. And we made a decision which was permissible to move it within one of our buildings under an agreement between the YMCA and the district, and it was approved by the board. We were able to do that because the executive order required and mandated that that service be provided. A few weeks ago, the governor indicated that he was going to approve the running of childcare programs and camps, summer day camps for kids. And so at that point, as the capital region was moving from phase one to phase two, and people were required to go to work, Green Bush Childcare began to receive numerous requests for programs. We indicated to Kim Urban, the director, that we were open to discussing it and planning it. There was still a lot of uncertainty as to whether or not we could do it. But we would move forward and try to reach some kind of an agreement to share with the board. And moving that agreement to our attorneys, the information I just sent yesterday, um, regarding what we were trying to do, and we asked them to replicate some of the language that we had within the YMCA's agreement. And the, uh, interpretation we received from our own attorneys is that because schools are not yet in phase four, we don't have the authority to do that, uh, that our building cannot be open to them until phase four. That same decision applies to, uh, other types of activities that typically use our school facilities. And that particular issue came to light when, um, in a couple of different ways. One, um, we received requests from the East Green Bush Girls Softball Association to allow the travel teams to start practicing at the Gilligan Road Complex, which is operated by the league. The property is owned by the district. I received that request, as did Town Supervisor Jack Conway. And we've had some, um, activities that weren't authorized, such as using the tennis courts and the basketball courts in the evenings happening on our properties, which caused folks to speculate, maybe those facilities could be open for tennis and other types of activities. So the New York State Public High School Athletic Association met today and indicated that they will not permit schools to operate summer athletic camps until we are in phase four, which is consistent with our attorney's advice. And, um, we, we operate a number of sports camps, uh, in the summer, and our coaches are anxious to reengage with the kids. If everything goes according to the phasing, if my calculations are right and things continue to look good, I think we'll be in phase four on or about the first week of July, depending on truly the governor's decision. So my thoughts are, and I'm interested in hearing everybody's thoughts on this. We want to make our school facilities and grounds available for the summer activities of our kids and our families. We wish we were permitted to do that. We don't believe that we are permitted to do that until phase four, so we have to wait another three weeks. Uh, and we want to try to reinforce the fact that this is not something that we like either, but we can't have people playing on the tennis courts that aren't permitted to do that or using our basketball courts at night. And we're in a bit of a dilemma. I don't want to go to the extent of taking down the rims on the basketball court. Only have to put them back up in three weeks, we can take the tennis nets down. It seems a little overkill, in my opinion. And we can't possibly police everything that's going on at night. Because our staff is not in the buildings.
We have playgrounds at every facility. We have other, you know, we have those fields. I mean, there's a lot of space out there that people are probably using. It's unfortunate, we're kind of in this position where, uh, phase four, maybe things will accelerate quicker. But I think, uh, those formal activities, camps, things like that, we just have to hold on and make sure the community understands that, uh, this is not something that we want to do. We've always been very open with our facilities and our grounds and allowed access for people. And, uh, I'd like to hear some more comments. As Jeff said, anyone else want to comment, Mark or anybody? It's out there virtually.
Do we have any who would use requests for that time?
Paul Bickel?
I know we have. Sorry, there was some interference there. I couldn't hear you.
Well, we, in a sense of what community groups you typically would have requested right now to use our fields and our facilities who aren't able to do that until phase four. Just give, give us some samples, if you know them off the top of your head.
Um, there's a couple. Let me just pull something up here. I've, I've had a request from some youth football, um, groups. Let me see.
That, that's okay. I'm not looking for exact names, but.
Okay, sorry. I just, yeah, I don't have it available in front of me right now, but.
Contact them and let them know that, you know, based on the governor's guidelines, you know, unfortunately, we cannot open those up just so that these organizations either just show up or they're not waiting, you know, for us to, to wait.
Yeah, there wa, there was, um, some word that an out, there were some outside groups actually being coached on our basketball courts. So that's kind of where a lot of this drew from, and I, I just want, reached out to Jeff to see where, where he wanted to go with that. So.
Well, and I met the secretary of the county block, getting their food and paper up and adding some signage. So we're going to, we're going to try to list, get a list of the groups and reach out with a letter and file them up as a whole.
John, if you want to say something, I saw you kind of pop on.
Yes, uh, Mike, thank you. Um, I think it's really important that we try to get everything on track as quick as possible, um, and get out ahead of this. So I would agree with what's being said. It's obvious we cannot violate the governor's mandates. But what I would like to see is have everything in place so that if, um, hypothetically, in three weeks, we get the green light, we don't spend time planning, that we know what these groups are, uh, and notify them, as Mark said, and put them in a holding pattern. And, uh, we will reach out to them instantaneous. I think we have to take the lead on this as a district and try to get things back, uh, as normal as possible. The kids, uh, really need this. And, uh, so I'm supportive, uh, of really being very aggressive and, on day one, when it's released, I want to see kids out using those fields. I think it's really important that we take the lead on this. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else?
Yeah, so I'll start reviewing what groups typically do use the fields this time of year and, uh, start putting a list together of that. And then we can, uh, send out a formal letter to them, just kind of letting know, them know where we're at currently and, you know, when it, it's expected to allow usage of the fields again.
And then internally, Mr. Leonard and those, those camps.
Mr. Leonard and I are meeting within the next couple of days and talk about the camps, talk about some other, uh, preliminary planning for the fall. So he and I are going to be talking about.
Thanks for tying those two together. And again, unfortunate, but we will, like John said, we'll proceed as quickly as possible once we get the green light. And, uh, I like the idea of being proactive with this, so thank you.
Mike?
Kathleen, yes?
In the meantime, do we have to have something posted like at the basketball courts or something that says that currently they are closed just to cover us legally?
We, we had that posted right at the beginning of this. We reposted a couple of different times. Uh, sometimes they take it down.
I was going to say, and those signs keep disappearing?
Yeah, we've, we've had many made up and laminated, and unfortunately, they don't last very long. We've had, uh, the caution tape across the gates. Um, nothing seems to work, unfortunately, so.
I, I think I would just recommend that we document our efforts.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Kathleen. All right, so we'll move, uh, move from discussion items, um, to committee reports. And we'll start with, uh, Marissa. Maybe?
I am all set at this time, Mike. Thank you.
Thanks, Marissa. Larry?
Oh, um, amongst the, uh, amongst the many things we're working on is a notification from the State Education Department, IDEA Grant Monitoring Group, uh, that we're being audited. And, uh, they are asking for several items, uh, to determine compliance, including our policies. They're in pretty good order, but they've also asked us for a federal funds procedural manual. And what this is designed to do is, um, document all the procedures that we do with regard to federal monies received in the school district, from budgeting to purchasing to compliance with policy, to cash management, conflict of interest, uh, equipment and assets purchased with the grants, uh, records retention, and if any of them are passed through funds. And, uh, so when they asked us for our procedural manual, it was determined we did not have one. And so, um, since, uh, Molly and Jim are pretty busy, I decided to see if we could create one. And we did find a, a template that was available from the Association of School Business Officials. And what we've done is taken the template and adapted it to how our district operates. And I passed that by the group, and I think their response was they were happy and they didn't have to do it. And, um, it does document what we do, and we're going to need it for the audit response, which is due shortly. And, um, you know, they may say, they may still cite us for not having one in place for the period of the audit, but either way, we have to provide them with the manual. And it does, uh, even things that we do each year in anticipation of grants with regard to maintenance of effort with the special education grants, uh, where they are looking for specific procedures that are set forth by the State Education Department. We still have to write them all down, what we do from start to finish. And we've done that, and, um, we think that this is, uh, a very comprehensive document and will serve. Well, uh, when they look at it, I'm sure they'll find some, uh, something that they want us to change, and then we'll just realize it. As, as usual with SCD. Uh, Molly, you want to comment or Jim?
No, thank you for doing that, Larry.
Many thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry. Big work. Just an example of, you know, the things that you do and the small things that help out the district and the college. Appreciate it. Um, next on, uh, Jim, you're next.
I just want to give a brief update on, uh, summer curriculum writing. You know, with the proposals, we are trying our best to maximize participation. What is occurring in these proposals is that you're seeing teachers from various grade levels involved. So it could be a middle school curriculum writing. There's a little bit of involvement from our K5. There's also involvement from our high school. Um, and that's kind of a common theme, uh, throughout the proposals. Uh, there were 18 summer curriculum writing proposals submitted this year. We had a little bit of leftover money remaining in this year's budget. And, uh, how we're using that is that we decided we really need to push people to create a to create a common midterm assessment at the high school. So there's some work being done to create a common midterm for living environment. Also, they're working on creating a common midterm in physics. So the midterm grade is 5% of the final average. And with three or four teachers teaching a subject, we really wanted to get to a point where there was greater equity and there was a common midterm exam given to all students. We are also using some of the remaining monies from this year to prepare for the transition to the Syracuse course, the introduction to public policy. And that'll just give our students an opportunity to take participation in government for college credit. Unfortunately, that's not going to be available this next year with the COVID-19. The one-week training session that Kelly Schrah was going to attend on behalf of the district has been canceled. But we are ready to go when they're ready to go. We're also using a little bit of the remaining monies. We rolled out the kindergarten and first grade standards-based report card. It was implemented this year. We continue to monitor that rollout, and we had some changes that we wanted to make within the scoring rubric. So that work is currently going on using monies from this year's budget. For the summer, curriculum writing proposals that are approved include Education and Society. That's a college course that will run through our high school social studies department. And it's part of the Russell Sage College Agreement for students that want to go in, that may want to go into teacher education. There's some summer curriculum writing work for Global History 10. That's the realignment of the curriculum based on the new K-12 social studies framework. So that really had to happen. There were two proposals submitted by Goff Middle School in English Language Arts. And we asked them to go back and do a little bit more work to make sure that those two proposals were aligned and that the communication was strengthened between those two groups. And that proposal is really going to work on updating the curriculum map and embedding many writing lessons within those curriculum maps, vocabulary and closed reading, and the integration of new class novels. So we're looking forward to that work. American Perspectives, that's just a curriculum update for Columbia High School Linguist Department, and Introduction to Literature. We've always run Introduction to Literature, but now we're running it through Siena College, so students can pick up those three college credits for that course. So we just need to do a little bit of work so that our core syllabus is aligned to Siena's core syllabus. Some of the big ones, Next Generation Science Standards, Grade Eight this year. And what's really exciting about the science curriculum writing projects is that we have high school teachers working with middle school teachers, and we have some elementary teachers also involved. But that's, this is year three. We worked on the sixth grade Next Generation Science Standards curriculum. And then the following year, we did Grade Seven, and this year, we'll do Grade Eight. We are also working on K-5 Next Generation Science Standard units. We have a group of teachers that are ready to work with Jane King from Questar Three Boses. And what that will do is that puts us in a pretty good place. There's physical science, life science, earth and space science. And all teachers, K-5, will have two complete units of study with one more remaining. And that work will continue into next year. But by the end of the summer, each grade level, K-5 district-wide, will have two common units at each grade level. And K-5 Social Studies Unit Development, this is year three of a five-year project. It was in their program review. Over the last three years, they've produced common units of instruction for all grade levels, K through five, for geography, culture. And this year is economics. Next year is government and civics, so some incredible work has been done in that area. And just to put it out there, we had a few proposals that are either placed on hold or they've been denied at this time. And those included three proposals for Career and Technical Education for Family and Consumer Sciences. We're not able to run those courses next year, so we're holding on that curriculum work. World Languages, Level Three, we're just going to wait a little bit. We've done some work in World Languages, Level One and Level Two. And we've got some other work to do before we go into that curriculum work. And Algebra One Regions, the math department pulled that at this time because, you know, state ed's lengthened their timeline. So we have a little time before we do that work. We have one that's on hold for K-5 Physical Education. Just have to solidify that plan a little bit and get a little bit more information. But that's where we stand right now. So our department, even though we've been virtual, our department chairs, our great little content coordinators, our building administrators, were involved in that conversation and those conversations. So we're in pretty good shape, and the work's ready to go. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. A lot of good work happening. Mr. Simons? Big topic?
Reopening task. Yes. We held our first meeting of our own district reopening task force this past Monday. When we surveyed through the unions and the administrators who wanted to be involved in it, we received nominations of 70 names, teachers, administrators, non-instructional staff, representing all roles and all levels. We did a Google Meet with 70 people, which was interesting and challenging. It was really an opportunity just to kind of frame for the committee what some of the decisions are that we have to make and also the context of those decisions, which is a very uncertain time right now. At the state level, we reviewed a PowerPoint, brief PowerPoint, seven-page PowerPoint that was provided to us from Dr. Cruz that indicated the process that the state was going to use for the state's task force. That process included regional forums, regional task force that are scheduled to meet. They have not met as of yet. You may recall that the governor, in response to a reporter a few weeks ago, said schools will have to have their plans in by July 1st for reopening. Regional meeting in this meeting, in this area, isn't scheduled till July 20, excuse me, till June 24th. So we don't think that that July 1 deadline is a real thing. We don't know as of yet. We had a meeting with Dr. Cruz today. We don't know as of yet who's on that task force. Dr. Cruz is not sure how some of the names were received by the state. So it's a bit of a confusion, confusing and disjointed process at this time. However, we're starting our own. We looked at the state document, which, in the categories at which the state is recommending, district's plan, various categories such as teaching and learning, other categories such as making sure that we are addressing ENL, Special Education students, students that may not be able to connect with technology, health and safety, facilities, transportation, and other areas. We also took a look at a document that was put together by Questar Boses and Rick Hanson, compared the two, and we think both of those documents will help us put together our plan. The broader categories of the state were favored by the district, but the detailed information about the decisions that we need to make are better outlined in the document from Questar, so we're going to use them both. We took an opportunity to ask people what their questions were right now, what was on their mind. We used the teaching strategy called KWL, what do you know, what do you want to know? What do you, what did we learn? And we're using that to take notes. The questions were generated. We are categorizing those questions into the various topics that need to be worked on. And we've asked everybody to give us their interests, which areas they want to work. And Stephanie, who's probably out there some way, where is trying to help me figure out how to assign people to the groups. We're going to have another meeting on Monday. Hopefully, between now and Monday, we'll be able to give those group assignments out, get some feedback on it. We're going to pick apart the Boses document a little bit more, give a little more direction to our subgroups, and start to plan. As Mr. Buno said earlier, I think we're in better shape today than we were Monday because I think some of the guidance regarding the special education summer school program will help us to predict to some degree what the guidance might be for the reopening. And we'll take a look at that document as well. I appreciate everybody wanting to be involved in it. It is hard to do the work remotely. Maybe when we break into the subgroups, we might have to have some physical meetings with masks on, get some of the work done, but I'm grateful that we've started this process. Allow a lot of guidance, but we're used to that.
Thanks for taking that on. Any questions for Jeff on the reopening task force? Do you have parents, students involved?
Yes. Couple students from the high school. We have some parents.
I know that, I think it was a thought exchange process they went out across the state as well. They had a lot of ideas. One of the things you might want to consider, though, between all the work we're doing as we get follow-up to our community forum and things like that at some point, too, that was very successful. I thought I asked a lot of questions. And things are happening so quickly. I know a lot of folks are inundated right now, but maybe down the road, we can try to do something for the community to have some feedback on.
Anthony Tamey from Questar Boses shared that thought exchange data with us today at a meeting. We have a hard copy of it and something that we're also keeping.
And I know we also, that's not, that's actually the governor's reimagine group is different than this group.
Yes.
Just so it's clear. We don't know what that looks like either, reimagining education. So that's another, I guess, thing out there that we have to be aware of. If there's no questions, I will move on to the minutes that conclude our committee reports. Now, I just, we can take these, I'd like to take A and B by consent. It was the same meeting. I think one correction, I believe, in the Kathleen was not here, but Karen was. I think I swallowed the minutes with that correction. Okay? Anybody have any comments or questions on the minutes? If not, I do need a motion to approve A and B by consent? Anyone? Motion? Karen? Second? Deanna? All those in favor? All those abstaining? Kathleen and Jen? Great. Approved. So we've got those two done. Next, moving on to regular business. Want to talk about, what are A first?
We discussed as a board, when we were informed that Mr. Edson was retiring, that we wanted to take a look at reorganizing the title and the job description. And the board agreed that a Director of Business and Finance position would be in order. And we approved the job description and also began the process through civil service of obtaining approval for the title and the job description, which was obtained by the district. We were happy to know that this is a non-testing position. We're not, the candidate that I'm recommending will not be required to take a test, although she will serve in a probationary period of six months. The item A is really the approval of the position and the contract associated with the position, and then the job description. And then later on in the agenda, I'm pleased to recommend Linda Wager, who is the current treasurer in the district, who has worked for our district for 18 years, I think, or about. Linda has demonstrated not only dedication to the district in her current role, but through the interview process in which she competed with seven other qualified candidates, a genuine interest in continuing to serve the district in a new, broader capacity. She will continue the stability of our financial operations and indicated a really strong indication that she would fit really well with our central office administrative team in a different role and working with our board and with everybody. So I'm very pleased to recommend Linda to the position. And hopefully, we can make this a smooth transition as Larry retires and Linda comes on board. And the agreement basically is a three-year agreement, which is in line with the civil service requirement as well as the scope of responsibilities for the position. It is, I'm pleased that Linda has indicated she would accept the agreement, and I recommend it.
Any questions before we move to that? So with just explanation, I need a motion to approve item A, the Greater Business and Finance. John, second. Mark, all those in favor? It's like unanimous. Congratulations, Linda. We'll have your appointment later on.
I thank Mr. Simon, and thank you to the whole board. I appreciate the opportunity and your confidence in me, and I know I have big shoes to fill. So I've had a great mentor that I've worked alongside with for a while. So thank you, Larry, for that, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks for the congratulations. Next on the agenda is the approval of programs for residents with children with disabilities. Any questions or comments on that? I need a motion to approve that. Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? That item is approved. Moving on to reports and presentations of the superintendent. Nothing further. Nothing further. Okay. We covered quite a bit today. Table motions, I have none. Old business, anything board members that needs to come to our attention? No? See a lot of heads shaking? No. That's good. Now moving to the consenting agenda. It's rather long because we're doing separate tenure resolutions for many of our folks. Finance reports, instructional, non-instructional, we have some gifts. Mark Mann, second. Deanna, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you very much. Item A, true facts are approved. Again, formally congratulate Linda once again on your appointment to the position. Table motion, old business, this is on. New business, anything board members? No? Okay. Moving to public forum number two. Anything come in, Mr. Simons? Nothing? Anything administrators that you'd like to say if those folks are on here? I see Bill has his hand raised. Thank you, Bill. Go ahead.
I'd just like to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to work for the East Green Bush School District for these past 13 years. It's been my great pleasure, and I know you're in good hands with Molly. She's had a eventful first year, that's for sure, but she's a real trooper and a hard worker, and she's going to do just fine with the district. And I think Kara Harrington is going to be a fine replacement for me, and you've made a good choice in her. And I'd like to thank you all for the work that you do for the Board of Education and the support you've always had for our programs, especially the special education programs. So thank you for that.
Great, Bill. Thank you very much, and much success in your next phase as retiree. And we want to thank you again for all your years of service to the district in supporting our students, especially those students with special needs. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else? Hands clapping in the audience, so congratulations. So good to see. And if there's no public forum or comments, emails, anything else, we'll go to the second board of ed program. Mr. Mann, anything? We'll go by the screen. Deanna? Good? John?
Just a quick congratulations to everyone. I want to thank everybody for their service to the district. It's a very committed group of people. It's sad to see people retire and move on in life, but you welcome the challenge of retirement. Bill, the North Country is calling. Larry, who knows what's in store for you? But most importantly, I really want to thank Linda. I was on the interview committee, and the fact that after working in the district, you've established yourself so well, you're moving into a challenge for the next phase of your career. And I really appreciate you doing that because the district will benefit from your knowledge and from your enthusiasm and the challenges faced ahead. So thanks to everybody, but Linda, anything that we can do to make you successful, I will be leading the charge. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Joanne? Good? Jennifer? Good? Karen? Karen?
Yeah, I echo what everybody said. I was just going to.
I was just going to thank everybody for all the hard work during these challenging times. You know, Jeff, everything's been hard with organizing everything. Mike Harkin up at the high school, thanks for all the efforts in getting everything out for our kids for graduation and moving forward. Molly and Marissa, thanks for everything you're doing for summer school and keeping staff and students and families, you know, up to date on what we're doing. Jim, keeping the curriculum going, even though it's hard times, everybody doing things remotely. And I really want to give a shout out also to Mark Adam for all the hard work that he's doing remotely. I know it's tremendous amount of materials coming in and challenges of all the new information hour to hour, so thank him for keeping it all together and congratulations to Linda. So thank you all.
Thanks, Karen. Kathleen, anything? Oh, you're good. Okay. I'm all set as well. We do have need for an executive session. Mr. Goodwin will be emailing you the link to the executive session and we do have one item, we will have to come back into public session to deal with, but it will be very brief. So with that, I want to thank everyone for tonight's meeting and, like I said, a lot of topics we had to cover, it was a lot of information, but it was good to have the discussion to get the information out there to the community. And at this point, I need a motion to go into executive session. Kathleen? Second? Deanna? All those in favor? Very good. Okay, we're going to move into executive session. Like I said, Peter will email you the link. Everyone else, have a great night. After the executive session, we will have to come back into public session briefly. Okay? Good night, everybody. Thank you very much and I appreciate your support and attendance tonight.